First, I need to read this preamble like every meeting now. In accordance with Executive Order N 29-20, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. Once you've called in, please press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand. And if you'd like, if you would like to comment on an item, and then when you're called on, press star six to unmute. And so with that, let's begin with saluting the flag. And do we have one? Well, there's one behind me. Usually Rex is showing us one. All right, here we go. Ah, thank you, Mike. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. So with that, we'll move on to our meeting today. I do want to remind folks that, again, when you want to speak, you know, call in, press star nine to raise your hand, press star six to unmute yourself. I'm pretty strict on the three-minute timeline that we have. So when you hear this noise, that means you've got thirty seconds left, and that's the time to start wrapping up your public comments. So don't take it personally because everyone's on the same clock and just maybe we can make sure everybody is heard equally by the board. So also, I'm gonna try to promise, but I can't totally promise. We're gonna try to take a break for ten minutes before the closed session item. It didn't work so well last time, but I wanted to give everyone a heads up that there should be a break coming, whether you're with us or at home. So with that, we'll move on to the agenda. And I'd like to ask our CIO if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Yes, there are modifications to the agenda this morning. Items C1 and C4 will be pulled from the consent calendar and brought back on February twenty third.
I can't hear you. Oh, no.
Can other people hear me?
Technical difficulties. Mike, can you take over for a moment, Supervisor Wilson? I can't hear anybody.
Ryan, Ryan Sharp, can you hear me?
Yes, CIO.
Okay. This is, I finally have it. You know, I'll get the hang of this Zoom thing eventually. I got too many buttons to press. All right, so Amy, can you please repeat what's being pulled?
Absolutely.
The modifications.
Item C1 and C4 will be pulled from the consent calendar and brought back on February twenty-third in order to complete the application process. And Supervisor Madron is pulling item C9 from the agenda for discussion. And that concludes the modifications to today's agenda.
All right, and thank you for your patience with my, my technical inabilities. So, all right, I see Michelle has her hand up. So I'll go to Supervisor Bushnell.
Hi, thank you, Supervisor Bass. I just would like to publicly thank Ronnie Pellegrini for her service on the Planning Commission and wish her well in the future. I really enjoyed getting to know her and valued her service there.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. And so what I'm looking for at the moment is a motion to approve the consent calendar minus C9 and with C1 and C4 pulled to come back in a future date.
So moved.
They're seconded?
All seconded.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. So now we will go out to public comment. And we have two hands up. Our first commenter ends in the last four digits, eight, one, one, four, followed by seven, four, five, four. Welcome. Press star six to unmute yourself. All right, are you there? No, okay, they actually, there you are. Welcome.
Yeah, this is Ken Dunn. I think I'm on item number five, and I think I may have pressed star nine too soon.
Actually, C5? I think you are on the consent calendar. Which specific item?
North Lumber Company.
Yeah, actually, this is the time for you to speak. You're actually right in the right place. So I will start your timer over, and you've got three minutes. And thank you for calling.
Yes, I'd just like to thank the Economic Development Department for putting together this survey. It's been really beneficial for us as a new company to understand and know how our employees feel about this new business we've started. And I want to thank the North Coast Journal for putting this together and making it a reality for us. Actually, let's see. And I also want to thank Frank Schmidtbauer. He's the owner of North Fork Lumber Company for investing in Humboldt County's future and creating so many good-paying jobs for the county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for calling in. And then we will go on to this public comment. And I'll go back to Supervisor Madron as soon as we're done a public comment. And our next and final public commenter on this item is Kent. Welcome, Kent.
Good morning, Virginia, et al. And given what the last speaker said on item number five, George and now Frank Schmidtbauer and their condition put together wonderful things that are great for both the environment and the jobs they create around here. And it's great, great appreciation. We have local people like that who are willing to put their time and effort and financial resources to work for our community. And so I, I know I've dealt with people who worked for them for years. I can't find overall, I don't think, any half-year group of employees from what I've seen. And of course, this study tends to indicate that. And so shout out to the Schmidtbowers et al. I also wanted to thank Lonnie Pellegrini for her service and the appointment of Thomas Mulder on the Planning Commission representing the Southern District. I think that will be, although Thomas and I don't always see eye to eye, he does his homework, he's diligent, and his service will be greatly appreciated and, I think, a great benefit. Also wanted to mention item number 10, withdrawal of a lost Boys Farm LLC appeal of the Planning Commission. I'm glad that they withdrew their appeal. That probably would have just been a long drawn-out battle in which, in my opinion, they would have lost that particular appeal eventually down the line, whether it be in a local court system or before the Board of Supes or in the Court of Appeal. So thank you, my opportunity to speak on your consent items. And also, you got an administrative penalty assessment on a property at 473 Quarry Road, Trinidad. Good job. It sounds like that was a really disaster over there. I know the people in the communities always appreciate you following through and doing those things. So thanks again.
All right, thank you, Kent. And I do believe, being nine, that item you mentioned was one of the ones that's cold, so that's coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, all right, thank you for calling in. And I'll go back to the board. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to thank North Fork Lumber Company and congratulate them and the Schmidtbauer family on their incredible efforts to keep that mill running out there in Corbell. We've seen so many mills close over the years, and it's just so heartening to see local investment, local jobs, and obviously, the employees feel really good about their employer and their business. So for those that aren't quite sure what we're talking about here, the Board of Supervisors wanted to recognize the North Fork Lumber Company in Corbell for being named the 2020 Best Business to Work For in Humboldt County. The Economic Development Team here at the county and the North Coast Journal partnered to run the county's first Best Humboldt County Company to Work For campaign, which is based on employee feedback and voting. So congratulations to North Fork Lumber for being selected as this year's winner. And we have a certificate that'll be coming to you from the Board of Supervisors, a certificate of recognition presented to the North Fork Lumber Company for the best company to work for in Humboldt County 2020. So again, congratulations to everybody out there at North Fork Lumber.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and I don't think we should underestimate, when we talk about investments, they spent over forty million dollars out there in Corbell to make this happen. And I, and I really appreciate Kenny Dunn stepping up. A lot of people, Kenny Dunn's a refugee from the old Dill River Sawmill days and, and, and learned his trade well and ended up over at Trinity River Lumber in Weaverville and was running that mill when it burnt down. And he rebuilt that mill. And then when Frank took the leap and took over the old Corbell Sawmill from Simpson Green Diamond, he transferred, came back over here and rebuilt that whole mill. Ken's kind of a master at that. Take away the fact he's a Dodger fan, but besides that, he's a pretty good guy. So I, I, I'm glad to see Ken back over here on the coast a little bit. And Frank and the whole family, again, that's an investment in the community that is really kind of second to none. So it's really appreciated and glad to see them recognized for this, especially somebody in the timber industry. They usually don't get recognized very often. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Are there any other comments from supervisors? Being none, Riley, please do a roll call vote.
Sure, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
No.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. All right, so we're gonna move on to public comment on non-agenda items. And this is time for the community to comment on items that are not on the agenda, and no action will be taken on these items. So let's see who we have signed up. All right, we have a couple of folks wanting to speak. And our first speaker is zero, one, five, zero, followed by seven, four, five, four.
Virginia, they unmuted me first. You want me to speak or hold off till the other people speak?
You know, I'll hold off if you don't mind, since I did.
Happy to do it. I'll.
All right, thank you, Kent, for doing that. All right, zero, one, five, zero.
Good morning, this is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. I just wanted to bring up a lot of misunderstanding about what's happening and what resources are available, excuse me, as far as housing is concerned in Southern Humboldt. One is supposedly there's some low-income housing that's available in Redway and Garberville, but I'm not sure where those are, and maybe they could be posted someplace. Excuse me, the other thing is that if people are not paying their rent because they don't have the money right now and they're supposed to be following the state guidelines for the 25% with the letter saying that they've been affected by COVID, not many of the people down here know to do that. Is there a way that, so I know you can't respond to me, so I just am suggesting that maybe at the Planning Department or somehow, since the Family Resource Center isn't open all the time and isn't always available to people that don't have children, that some places set up so that people can find out how they access this information. It's both helpful for the tenants and landlords because taxes are due, things have to be paid by, by landowners. And if we're not all working together, then it's a crisis for everybody. So I don't know how to find that information out, who in the county has, in Southern Humboldt, is available to tell tenants how to work out, how to notify their landlord and get this all underway. There's money that should be brought into our community, and I don't know how to access it for our tenants or for ourselves. So hopefully, somebody will hear this that's on this call and can give me a call and reach out to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Dottie, and I believe someone will contact you. So our next speaker is Kent, followed by six, four, five, nine. Welcome, Kent.
Thank you very much. I wanted to bring up a topic, and I did serve a, regarding a Brown Act violation for a cease and desist to the supervisors. And apparently, according to speaking with, with the powers that be, that Executive Order N-29-20 suspends the Brown Act. And I wish people to be aware of that, if that's the case, it's true. I do feel there's ways to mitigate this. And I do feel the long-term plan is going to be that people will be able to participate in this process, you folks, people from out of the area, on an ongoing basis. For those of us who watch these on TV or Channel 10, we don't have access to what's been referred to as the Brady Bunch, or there's a bunch of other names for that. So we don't know who's doing what in the meeting. And so I think, having run this by a few staff people and other people, there should be an easy way that we would be complying with the Brown Act in the future, and it'd be nice to be transparent and do it now. And that would be to show, basically, the supervisors at all times, not the other thirty people that are participating in the meeting. There's not room for that. But the five primaries there, and then also have, if people are willing to, you could have a list of participants over to the side of that. And the Brady Bunch could be stacked up on top of each other, leaving probably two-thirds of the screen open for the current speaker and for people when they share the screen. So I'm asking the supes to go ahead and try to work on this, have their staff try and facilitate this in a manner. My understanding is you folks see those things, the public doesn't. And in the name of transparency, whether the Brown Act's there or not, I'm requesting that you initiate some kind of study or some kind of a way to technologically facilitate full transparency or meetings. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on that particular topic.
Thank you, Kent. Next, we're gonna go to six, four, five, nine. And please press star six to unmute. Six, four, five, nine, if you're hearing us, can you please just press star six to unmute? All right, well, for the moment, we're going to go to three, zero, five, three, which I believe is Thomas. Welcome.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. I, yeah. I don't know to say thank you on your last vote or not, because I'm still, it's gonna be interesting because now I have to be careful of what I say because I can't comment on things that may potentially come before the Planning Commission first. So it's gonna be interesting. As far as, I commented, I think, two weeks, two meetings ago, with, just to remind you, as the state agencies are combining or dissolving down into one for cannabis licensing, I think it'd be a good time for the county to reach out and talk about some of the challenges, specifically around the family farms that are run. You know, there's family members that are under the age of 21. There's limited employment opportunities in Humboldt County, and it's unfortunate that someone under the age of 21 can't legally take a job that pays over thirty thousand dollars a year because they happen to be under 21. Full disclosure, I mean, that, that does include my child, who's nineteen and a half right now. She cannot legally work for me. And it's unfortunate that those opportunities, if that's what people want to do, they were born and raised into this. And if that's a career choice that they want to take, you know, it's interesting. Cannabis is now legal, except for federally. We do get our bank accounts shut down because we are drug dealers, according to the banking industry. So it's a little challenging. But just, just something to think about. Maybe you can have staff reach out to the state agencies and kind of think about that, about family-run farms. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Thomas, and thank you for your willingness to serve. And it sounds like you're going in with your eyes pretty wide open. All right, so the last commenter we have, if ready, is ending in six, four, five, nine. And if that is you, please press, there you go. Welcome.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Catherine Holman, and I'm calling from the Fifth District. While giving public comment at last week's Trinidad City Council meeting, a member of your board referenced my family's project as a bad example of something that might happen. Every detail he used to describe our project had nature false information. Because this public comment was also submitted to the City Council in writing under Board of Supervisor, County of Humboldt, letterhead, I come to you to publicly affirm that our project was misrepresented by Supervisor Madron. For over ten years, my husband and I worked closely with your planning department staff. We exclusively used local reputable engineers and field experts and consulted with county and state agencies, neighbors, and the Euro tribe. This project was unanimously approved by the Humboldt County Planning Commission. The county's Board of Supervisors approved of the project and unanimously voted to deny an appeal by an opponent. The California Coastal Commission also unanimously followed its local staff's recommendation and denied an appeal. And this was prior to Supervisor Wilson and former Supervisor Sunburg holding the seat. The Coastal Commission has publicly praised our project, questioned the audacity of the appellant, and apologized to us, stating that the system had failed in our case. Inflated, misrepresented, false facts have recklessly been used for years to derail our project and to damage my family's reputation. And this time, on Humboldt County Board of Supervisor's stationery, there is a new version of false information. Signed, Steve Madron, Fifth District Supervisor. It's visible online, not only on the Facebook page of Humboldt Alliance for Responsible Planning, but also in Trinidad City public documents. I am bringing this before you partly for my family's own reputation, of course. But I am concerned that the whole process by which the county regulates land use cannot function without correct information. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Catherine. All right, so at this point in time, I see no other hands up. So we'll go back to our agenda. No special presentation, so we're going to go to the items pulled. And that would be C9 and Supervisor Madron. I'll turn it over to you to explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just pulled this so that the property owner, if available, could have a chance to speak. But more importantly, I was hoping that John Ford might be able to provide us an update. There certainly was a lot of egregious stuff going on on the property. The photographs speak for themselves in our packet. There's quite a few of them, quite a few violations. I just wanted to know if the stuff in our packet was current or if that was from a year or two ago, and if the director knows what the current status of the project is. Has the landowner been working to clean things up? You know, what kind of status are we at there? I think my biggest concern is that, you know, when we abate things, sometime, I mean, we need to deal with the law and make sure people are following the law. I have no, no issues with that whatsoever. And very much appreciate code enforcement and Director Ford's efforts in his department to try and bring compliance around all over the county. But when we've got these properties that have so much going on, kind of like the Dinsmore Junkyard, although that one's about a hundredfold bigger than this thing, I guess my concern is that when we levy large fines, does the property owner end up walking away? Do we end up with the nightmare of the mess to clean up when, you know, the property defaults for failure to pay taxes in a few years or whatever? So I'm just trying to figure out how we, you know, make sure these things get cleaned up and don't end up as a massive burden to the county. And I know that John's staff worked really hard, Director Ford's staff worked really hard with the landowners to try and help them come into compliance. So in no way is this a reflection on Director Ford and his staff and how they, they handle these things. I just thought it'd be good to have a chance to talk about it. Thank you.
Director Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Good morning. John Ford, Director of Planning and Building. Just like to put this in context for a moment. Do respect the comments that Supervisor Madron has made. This is actually a violation that goes back to 2001. And there was a settlement agreement dating back to 2009 where the property owner agreed to come in and get permits to rectify the situation. The permits were applied for, I believe, two different times. No permits were ever pulled, no improvements were ever done. The site was never brought into compliance. We received complaints again in 2017. Our primary means of encouraging people to move into compliance is in the initial phases after the notices of violation and abatement have been sent out, is to offer reduced fines and penalties in exchange for cleaning the site up. In this particular case, we offered one thousand dollar fine for each violation in exchange for entering into a compliance agreement and agreeing to clean, clean the site up. The property owner was unwilling to do that. The property owner has appealed each step of the way. They appealed to the hearing officer. The hearing officer found that there were violations here. They then appealed the hearing officer's decisions to the Superior Court. Superior Court agreed. At this point, all avenues for the property owner have expired. They haven't appealed the judgment handed down by the court for forty-five thousand dollars of fines and penalties and seventeen thousand dollars in staff time invested in this. They've not informed us that they've taken any action to clean the site up. We believe the site's still in the same condition that it was in. Unfortunately, this may end up in us taking abatement action. And, and we try to avoid that. We, that's why we, early on, offer terms of a settlement to encourage the cleanup. But in this particular case, the property owner has chosen to continue to appeal to the end of the process. And now we're at the situation that we're at.
Thank you, Director Ford. If anyone wants to, I mean, Supervisor Madron, then anyone else might have a question for the director.
Thank you, Director Ford, for, for that. I appreciate that these are difficult things to work with, and you've given the applicant or the landowner ample opportunity over and over again to try and comply and a lot of time to work on that. I think part of what's happening here is, you know, the lack of housing, not only in our community but all over the state, is part of this puzzle. And I do know that this individual, the landowner, in many ways was, was simply trying to provide housing opportunities for people. To the common eye, it may look like this is just a complete mess. And I, I agree. I think there's an awful lot of garbage and debris and all kinds of things piled up and other stuff. But being an individual that once lived for four years out in the Honeydew area in the hills with my family, we were very poor at the time, and we lived in a wiki-up, and we had a pit privy. It wasn't anywhere near a creek or anything else, and we, we handled it in a sanitary way. I, I just think that, you know, until we, as a state and a county, adopt waterless toilet rules that allow for that to happen and other kinds of things, we're gonna continue to have a lack of housing and opportunities. And, you know, in the essence of what happened here, this individual was really just trying to provide housing opportunities, places for people to live on his property for people who were pretty much, pretty poor. And we see this all over. And I just think that these things are gonna keep happening until we actually provide an avenue for more people to have housing that may not be like many of us have or would like to have, you know, four walls and, you know, code construction and the rest of it. But, you know, I just want to encourage us to try and move forward in the near future with providing more options for sewage disposal that is sanitary, that is, can be done in a responsible manner, et cetera. Because I think when we do that, we're gonna open up more housing opportunities. That being said, this property went way beyond just trying to provide housing for poor people. And the amount of debris and junk and the unsanitary conditions were absolutely an issue. So there's really no choice here but to move forward. So I appreciate that. But I, I just think there's more to this issue than meets the eye in terms of housing in the community. And, you know, Dottie Russell was just on a few minutes ago talking about some of those issues in Southern Humboldt as well. So just something we need to work on, not gonna solve it today. Thank you for, for your responses, Director Ford. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. And Supervisor Bone?
Yes, as one that's been up by that property, and I understand the housing issue, that's not housing. I mean, I mean, not if you're gonna, you know, I, I'm glad to hear you had an environmentally correct privy in Honeydew, but I, I'm just saying, those are not, I mean, that, that's, that's a pretty good watershed through there. And I know we keep all the neighbors on a pretty tight leash on, on water runoff and everything else. But all the oils and, and things in those vehicles and the dumping, I mean, there's. But all the oils and things in those vehicles and the dumping, I mean, there's, I think anybody can live anywhere, but, and I applaud you for 40 years of keeping clean and a privy and everything, but I mean, it's just, it's just, that is unsanitary conditions, and I don't know if that is a burden on us or a burden on society. I think that's maybe a little bit of being overrun, and in this case, I think the neighbors have to be concerned up and down Quarry Road, because I know they've had an extreme issue with this, and that's where a lot of the complaints from. So, I mean, John Ford and I took some, took a drive yesterday looking at some properties, or we actually looked at something else, then drove by some properties, and I applaud code enforcement and the process it takes. But like I said, 20 years later, I think, I don't know if it's the housing issue or if it's just somebody just doesn't want to clean up their site. So, again, I applaud code enforcement for following through with this.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron, I mean, Bone. I did want to make a comment as well. I mean, actually, I think Supervisor Bone and Madron actually are in somewhat agreement that this was too far, and so, and the housing was kind of a separate conversation. I did want to ask Director Ford a couple of questions, because I found it did set a pattern of, you know, what's happened the last 19 years. But what exactly is it when people apply for permits but not pull? Because, you know, applied would show intent, but apparently that's not the end of the process.
And I'll thank, thank you Supervisor or Chair Bass. The situation was is that in the settlement agreement, they were required to obtain permits and to remove unpermissible items. So they submitted very incomplete building permit applications. We did provide written, a written response identifying what needed to be done to make them complete. The permit applications were never made complete.
All right, and then following up on the court fines and, you know, the dollars that we're seeing here, that mostly the number it is because this party has appealed all of their, they've used all their appeal processes and ended up in the court system, and so that is kind of how we've ended up at this number.
Correct. Yeah. The fines and penalties really, from our perspective, are there not because that's what we're after. We're after getting sites cleaned up. And if they would have agreed to clean the site up, we would not be talking about this dollar amount. We'd be talking about less than $10,000 in terms of fines and penalties.
All right, thank you. Any other supervisors have a question before we go out to public comment? All right, well then, allowed to public comment. We have several speakers on this. Our first speaker has the last four digits of 3053, and following that will be 0150. So welcome, 3053, and press six to unmute. Wait. Yeah, 3509, I was wrong. Sorry, I moved it around. Where'd you go? Welcome, 3509. Sorry about that. Are you there? All right, welcome.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Mary. I was actually going to comment on the 473 Quarry and whether or not some cleanup. I've had family that's lived out there. I've lived out there myself. I know that now there is a toilet, there's actually been a service for over a year for a porta potty, so sanitized wise, it is cleaned up considerably. There's trash service, there's, as far as I know, he's been cleaning up the property. I don't know how recent all of this is. I just know that he, I mean, he has provided a service for families in Humboldt that couldn't have found housing otherwise. The housing crisis, when I lived out there, I had two kids, and the only thing that I could find that, working full-time, like, full-time, you know, in my field, the only thing I could find previous to that was in Oric. It was considered safe housing, and it had molding walls and was a converted motel. You know what I mean? So I understand him needing to clean up the property. I just wonder what happens to the families that are out there. Hello?
Yeah, thank you. We can't answer any questions. We can just take your comments and hopefully cover it afterwards.
Okay, well, yeah, no, I just, I mean, I have seen changes when I've gone out there to visit, and I've seen, like I said, there's a porta potty, there's trash service, I've seen it cleaned up, I've seen people working on things, and it looking nice, gardens and just, you know. So I understand that he hasn't been in compliance for what sounds like a very long time, even when I was out there, but I just, you know, when we talk about a housing service, he has provided it for families that couldn't otherwise have found housing, even, even like I said, working full-time. So, thank you.
All right, thank you for calling. And I do want to let people who are waiting on the phone to make calls or to talk know that on this vision, the hands switch up and down, so I'm trying to call whoever raises their hand first, and it is a little bit challenging. So Ryan is manning the controls, and he'll make sure the right person gets unmuted. So with that, we're going to go to 9786, followed by 0933. And press star six to unmute. All right, we will then switch down to 0933. Please press star six to unmute. All right, again, 0933. I don't know if these are all an error, but, all right, well then, in that case, we're going to go to 497.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, yeah, sorry, my machine didn't sink in the star six.
That's all right.
This is Tom Glover. This has been a long issue with this property, going back to 2007. He was asked, Charles Garth was asked to, for an inspection there, and he said yes, came down to the gate and was met by arrested, put in handcuffs, guys with machine guns. The DEA came through, found no drugs, no nothing. This is not a drug property, and he has been taking care of poor people for 34 years, and it is substandard, and it needs some cleanup. There's no question about that. But he has no funds to do this kind of stuff with, and he's been taking care of people for a long time. This, Director Ford has been misrepresenting this because he didn't follow it up. There has been a lot of cleanup on this property. Again, someone just told about the porta potties and things like that out there. If you shut this down, then these poor people will have nowhere to go. And I think we saw in Eureka that if you do that, then you have to provide housing or someplace for these people to go, which is real challenging in these COVID times. So he's been trying to take care of people and making nothing out of this. This is not something he gets anything out of, and the punishment just doesn't meet the crime. A thousand, $8,000 a day or something for, for, for what? For having a code violation? There's also been another misrepresentation here by Director Ford, in that he put in a permit, and it sat there on the desks for years, and no one even processed it. So there's really nothing happening here. And then when he went in and said, "I put in a permit," they said to him, "No, it's expired." Well, it did expire, you know, but that's because the county did nothing about it, and then accused him of not having put in a permit, and then accused him of not having a permit on his house, and all this stuff that they just didn't even have any records on. They didn't even know where their records were. It'd be a missed carriage of justice to put these penalties on someone who's only been tried to do the right thing. So I think this has been a big mistake from the very beginning, and he has been cleaning it up, and you need to acknowledge that because they haven't been out to inspect. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Tom. So our next speaker will be ending in the last four of 9786. Press star six to unmute. All right, we're going to go next to 3053, which I believe is Thomas. No? Yes, welcome.
Hello, Thomas Mulder here. I honestly, this isn't my backyard, and it's kind of really, really far north of me, but I think Supervisor Madron opened the door to, he brought up Dottie Bushnell, and I did not, or, or, not Dottie Russell, sorry, I, sorry, Dottie Bushnell, but Dottie Russell. He brought up that name, and Chair did not cut him off. So I think that opens Pandora's Box to talk about other people that operate properties that are subpar and devalue neighbors' properties around there. I think the proper thing to do, I support, I just Googled the pictures and looked at them, and holy cow, if I owned property down there, you guys would get emails from me every single day, maybe five a day. That's just unacceptable, but also I understand the housing issue. So maybe some of these properties might be the right thing for the county to take over, use some of the abatement money to put in a tiny home complex or something like that. But the way that's operating, that's not good for health and safety, that's not good for the neighborhood, that's not good for the environment, and it's, it's subpar housing. I mean, if we're talking about COVID times and people being healthy, use that abatement money, bulldoze that site, put in some septic systems, put in some tiny homes, and you have a nice little complex. I think that would be something. I mean, because Dottie's name was brought up, I think that could be done. You know, multiple sites that people close to her have property values drastically degraded. So you have to think about everyone within the county and the people living in that situation, that, we should want better for them. We have money, abatement money, let's do something with the county, take that property over, maybe a bunch of these places that are subpar, and use that abatement money to put in a better housing situation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you, Thomas. And so next, we're going to start, we're going to go to 0150, and then 7454, and I believe we're welcoming Dottie on 0150.
Hello, this is Dottie Russell. So I have multiple things to say. I'll see how fast I can say it. First of all, I think this conversation is about the property that was brought forward and not about me as a substandard landlord, and if Mr. Mulder is going to be on the planning department, I think it's time that he stop addressing me and being aggressive to me, number one. Number two, as far as trying to help people that don't have housing, if we work together, we can find a way to take care of some of these problems. So for example, I am going through the courts. Very few people go through the courts when they want somebody to leave. They take a shotgun out there, they threaten people, they do all kinds of insane things from my perspective. I'm going through a lawyer to have things appropriately done, even though it's through COVID, we have a lockout date this month, so everybody can say everything they want, but the church was burned down in Garberville because the people that lived in that community didn't have the decency to call me, to tell me that some people had gone in the property. I went there and said, "It's time for you to get out of here, you're not allowed to be here." They said, "We're going to burn the house, we're going to burn the church down the next day," and they burned the church down. I have had no help whatsoever. They burned it down because they were cold and they wanted a place to be. I'm not justifying it. They shouldn't have done that, and it's been very traumatic for us. But the bottom line is, there are people that do have compassion. Instead of trying to fight them and pick on them, instead, if we all work together, we can find a solution for this. All these people that were put in motels, some of them were not put in motels. They weren't put in motels because they're hard to put in a motel, because they don't act or behave the way you want them to. So if all the difficult ones are on the streets and have no place to go because they're more difficult because they have challenges, whatever they are, that, then we're always going to have this mess. The amount of money that has been saved over the last 30 years by these people, and who knows, 20 years by me, by trying to provide someplace for people to be the best we can with the money we have to deal with, has saved the county probably well over a million, $2 million, maybe $3 million. Why don't you approve some of these things to get a team together to work on how to help these people so that they're not a nuisance? You think it's fun for us to have a nuisance on our property? Well, I can tell you right now, it's not fun. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thank you, Dottie. And I think what I'd like to say to the commenters, I know I seriously can't tell you necessarily from the public to not say something, but this calling out people by name is probably not the best because people may be being harassed at home or anywhere else. So I just ask people to kind of, you know, if you want to refer to a piece of property, that's fine, I'd be a little bit concerned. I mean, I am concerned about hearing people's names brought up because obviously it's, 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 I think, a problem. Again, I can't tell you what to say or not say in a public comment, I'm just requesting you try to be careful about that for people's privacy. So the next speaker is Kent at 7454, followed by 2977.
Virginia, yeah, I, you know, I'm a First Amendment advocate, and your verbiage was correctly applied as just you did it there. I don't feel that was in any way to chill anybody, but just to make the request is what you can do. You can't really do anything more than that, as you're probably painfully aware. First Amendment's First Amendment. You know, I wanted to point out something that, you know, I, I've a long time had a desire to try and help with this problem. I have two major sites which probably would house, I don't know, maybe 50, maybe 75 different tiny homes or something like that, and yet our general plan zoning has not moved forward at all. And so now, just to let you know how these things work in my world, down in Mexico, I can pick up a lot for $10,000, put two to four recycled used RVs, fifth-wheelers or motorhomes on those, with services, sanitary, upgraded, and those units cost me right around $2,000 to $3,000 per unit. And so it's really hard for me to be continuing to try and fight up here, but my food and water hookups would be $25,000 just for a hookup. And so a lot of us who try to, try to put our money, we're picking up and going, it's just too much easier down there. We don't have the regulations, people are happy to see you, people are happy to work with you, and people are grateful for the housing that are being able to be provided for people who can't afford these things. And I don't know how many of these RVs and things you've seen around that basically possibly could be restored, and I don't know, they're, they're being taken off and used somewhere off in the woods or something, but it sure would be a lot nicer if you had a procedure for someone, now that I've lost interest, someone other than me, to go ahead and move forward with these kind of projects and to enable them to help with the situation, be it tiny home villages, which is equivalent of, in my opinion, with an RV park design, full, full, full up the code as far as everything required. And until we reprogram ourselves in our planning and building department to enable and facilitate those projects, your problems will continue to grow, and I just think you need a whole new mindset there, without mentioning anybody's names, just particularly property. Thank you for my opportunity to exercise my First Amendment right today.
Thank you, Kent. Looks like the last two speakers, well, potentially three of 9786 is on eventually, but we'll go to 2977, followed by 6459. So if you are the number ending in 2977, press star six to unmute yourself. All right, and we'll go back to 6459. Please press star six to unmute. Hello? Excuse me, I'll be right back to you, 2977. All right, just, we'll call on you right next, because I, I kind of need people to be ready, okay? So you'll be right next, and we're going to go to 6459 since she is. So you'll be right next and we're gonna go to six, four, five, nine since she is.
Hello, Supervisors, this is Katrine Hohmann again. I'm still on from the previous comment. So I'm not familiar with this property, but it sounds like the property owner is trying to, to do a good thing and help others. Um, he's just not doing it in the best way and, um, he's doing it by himself. So I feel like this is a case where everybody really would benefit if everyone works together and if the county and the community could come together and help out and, and, um, work on this together and provide for these people on that property, that would just be such an incredible, beautiful thing. And I also wanna say the, the state, there is still an eviction, um, um, moratorium in place, so, um, it's, I feel for these people and I wish, um, that everybody could come together and help instead of just punishing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. The next, we will go to two, nine, seven, seven, and there you are and you're unmuted and the floor is yours.
Uh, good morning. I'm the other principal here, this is Charles Garth. I live in the woods outside of Trinidad. I'm surrounded on three sides by an environmental disaster, the Mercer Fishe Rock Quarry. I've been subjected to their poison, it's hard to think. If I have a bunch of people, the poor people, they have a lot of stuff and they're supposed to clean it up because we've got cops and code enforcement on us all the time, it's hard to keep our head straight with the, the din and noise and pollution that quarry going on, there's a double standard going on here. When I go into Trinidad, uh, my town, if you're 34 years, no one lives there. Go at night, go to Trinidad, only a third of the houses have lights on and cars out front. The rich people don't even live there anymore and the poor people certainly can't live there. And everybody that lives in my place, they work, they're good people, I have a nice crew. I'm, I'm stoked that I have a nice crew, it's really hard to keep a nice crew when you're under attack all the time. We, I've done so much cleanup, but there's no picture of it in any of those pictures you've got, those are horrible pictures. Tell you what, give me a black and white camera, I'll look in your closet, I'll look in your backyard, I'll find something that doesn't look good, okay? No, I live in a beautiful place, we're happy, we have gardens, we're raising kids, um, and for the county to be riding us all the time, we have a contract, we have a public contract, we, we worked it out back in 08. The county has disregarded my contract, um, you know, I, I lost my lawyer, my lawyer, he probably died on me, nobody knows, he, he got a degenerative brain disease last year. I don't even have a lawyer, but, and he told me he'd save my village, well, he couldn't even save himself. But I got a letter from him, uh, to the county, I said, I gave all my papers to, I've been trying to get another lawyer, it's difficult. All my papers are lost somewhere else now, I don't even have them because I tried to get this other lawyer interested, he won't even call me back. Lawyers don't like losing cases, they like winning cases. It's really hard to get representation. At any rate, my lawyer, my old lawyer who made, I hope he's doing okay, I hope he saved himself. But, uh, he's got a letter that I've got to the, to the county council saying, um, if you move to the bait, we're gonna sue you for breach of contract. Well, you know what? I'm kinda over it at this point. If you guys wanna take the property, you go ahead and take it. I'm not gonna pay your fee, I'll just give it to you, you can have it and see if you run it better than I do. You know, it's hard dealing with, with a lot of people and people have stuff, especially poor, that's all they've got, poor people, that's all they've got, you know? And we try really hard and we keep, all those pictures are old, none of those pictures are new, we cleaned the place up. And, and, you know, I made a contract with you guys, you gonna, are you gonna like stick up to your side of the bargain or what?
All right, thank you very much for calling in. And now we are going to try one last time for nine, seven, eight, six. If you are wanting to talk on this item, please do press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Welcome.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Heather Pierce and I lived at four, seven, three Quarry Road many years ago when my son was a toddler. And I just wanted to say, um, as a young family starting out, he, um, that gave us the opportunity to stay in the area. We probably couldn't have stayed otherwise because we were really poor then. Since then, you know, I've stayed here, I'm a homeowner in Arcata, I work in a school office, doing the essential business of this county every day. And I know of several friends that can say almost the exact same thing. Charles gave us our start here in this community where we could stay, grow, become, um, contributing members of this community. And I really, you know, everything that's been said about the shorting, shortage of affordable housing, it's all very true. And he has been working towards that and I think the county should help him. I don't think the county should be punishing him. I think the county needs to help. And that's all, that's all I'm gonna say, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Heather. So at this point, there's no other public comment, hands raised. I do wanna give Dr., uh, Dr., Director Ford an opportunity to, um, perhaps respond to something he heard and I'll go to Supervisor Bushnell, who's been very patient.
Is that to me first, Chair Bass?
I thought you might clear up a few things that might have come up.
Yeah, there was a few things that were brought up that I, I would like to respond to. First off is, is just in terms of overall context, the site is in the forest. It's a zoned AG, which allows a maximum of two units. And, and so part of the settlement agreement that we offered was to work with Mr. Garth to get two units permitted, um, so that he could at least carry on with that. To have many, many, many families living on the site is inconsistent with the zoning. We, you know, the comment was made that, um, I've mischaracterized the situation that he's actually cleaning the site up. It's a bit of an interesting scenario because he hasn't been working with us if he's cleaning the site up, he's not been communicating with us. In fact, at this point, he's got a judgment from the court advising him of what he needs to do. And part of that judgment includes not having all those people living there. And, and so that is a continuation of the violation. I'm not going to at all diminish the importance of affordable housing, the need for housing and, and the struggle to provide housing because that obviously is something that we're all struggling with deeply. Going back to, uh, having the, um, the sheriff and armed people come to the site, including code enforcement, one code enforcement is never armed. We were threatened with guns, we were threatened to be shot. And so there was a sheriff that accompanied us on one of the inspections. In that particular inspection, after the, uh, we got advance notice saying that we were coming, um, there was nobody on the site when we arrived. And although the sheriff was there with us, this has been a difficult and contentious process. I'm, I'm not gonna spend too much time talking about the general plan zoning. That just simply remind the board that we are in litigation about that and that is painful that we're not able to move a little faster with that. I think the, the thing that's being misrepresented here is there is no contract. Going back to 2008, there was a settlement agreement that was not complied with. The allegation was made is that we sat on a building permit, uh, that was applied for. The reality is that the building permit was submitted, but it was not complete. The applicant was notified that it was not complete and allowed it to expire. And, and so it's not that we took and put it in some corner and didn't act on it, it was just so substantially incomplete, it couldn't be processed. I think those were the big things that, that I saw. Not dismissing again, the need for housing, wanna work with people to provide housing, we spent a lot of time working to that end and still want to work with Mr. Garth to get this site cleaned up and brought into compliance.
All right, thank you, Director Ford. And I do see someone else called in, but we have moved past the public comment period, so I do apologize for that if you had wanted to comment on this item. Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, I have several questions, um, and I think Director Ford is the one that's gonna be able to answer them. So concerning this, um, item, agenda item, this is about civil penalties administrative that have come forward, am I correct?
That is correct.
These are not penalties for the, um, for the condition of the property? Is that wrong or right?
These are penalties related to the fact that we could not bring the site into compliance before this ended up in front of a hearing officer and before a judge.
Okay, thank you for that. Can you tell me when was the last time this property was looked at by code enforcement or by our staff?
I think we provided a timeline. And it looks like the last time that we've actually identified, we may have been out there since, but the last time we did a, uh, inspection report was in 2019.
Are the pictures reflective of that 2019 report?
Probably not all of them, no.
Um, do you know how many people are living on site?
Have we, each time we get a consent inspection and go out, the people who live on site are not there. So we are never actually able or have not been able to actually visit the site when people are on the site.
Do you know or are you aware, does the landowner live on site?
I'm, I'm sorry, that, I, I couldn't hear you clearly on that.
Does the landowner live on site?
I believe he does.
Okay. Is there power to the property? P G N E?
I believe there is, yes.
And then, um, also, um, we've given him lots of opt, has the county given him lots of options, um, before this, this came to this, uh, agenda item today?
We gave him options in 2017 to clean the site up. Gave him, offered a compliance agreement with reduced fines and penalties to work to clean the site up, gave him a path forward to reduce the number of units, to remove all the illegal units and to permit two units. He rejected that.
And that, that offer in 2017 was a reduction of these fines and penalties, correct?
Yes.
So at this point, um, the options for him have been expired because he hasn't been receptive to them?
The options to him have been that he appealed to the hearing officer and the hearing officer found, um, in favor of the code enforcement unit. The, he then appealed that to court, the judge found in favor of the, what the hearing officer had, um, uh, offered and, uh, confirmed the penalties for $45,000 in fines and penalties and then $17,000 in, in change. I don't wanna diminish that, but, um, in terms of staff time that is taken to work on this.
And that came from a court, court proceeding?
That came from the court, yes. What the board is being asked to do is to simply say, yep, we agree with the court and we're administering these fines and penalties. There are two processes available here, one, and, and we followed the process of notifying the property owner that these fee or fines were being administered. He had the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Supervisors and then under that case, what this would come forward to the Board of Supervisors as an appeal hearing. In this particular case, there was no appeal filed, so what the code calls for is for the board to summarily approve the fines and penalties.
Thank you. My last question, and I'm sorry to be asking so many. Do you know if he is, um, is he renting to other individuals or is he allowing people just to squat there?
It is my understanding he is renting.
Thank you, John, our Director Ford.
Right, Supervisor Bushnell, any other questions from Supervisors? Or potential motion? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, I know since 2019, there's been more abandoned cars brought up there and I know they're encroaching on some of the neighbor's property. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed administrative civil penalty assessment on the property located on Quarry Road in Trinidad.
I'll second the motion.
I think the motion has been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just want, thank you, I just wanna, um, you know, it's hard when we get to these places, I do wanna say that, you know, if we want, this discussion really did veer quite a bit away from the actual item and it's, it is unfair, I think, to folks who are interested in this issue, either from a housing or land use perspective, to not be available to have, be part of that discussion, if that's what we're gonna really get into and maybe something that we wanna have on a later agenda. But I also wanna say, I, I too also have some experience in this, my, my, um, you know, family has owned property with, uh, with numerous trailers and those sorts of things, but all, you know, it took a lot of hard work, uh, to keep all of those abandoned cars off of there and keep all of those, you know, those places clean and, and, um, and provide affordable housing for people. It's, it's not easy, but, um, it's, it is imperative that, um, as good neighbors, um, that, uh, that the work really be done and, and, and in this case, it really hasn't. So I, I'm okay with the further one.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I have one more question for Director Ford, I apologize. So if this property was to be sold or is, um, with the, these fines and penalties are going to be attached through a lien on the APN, am I, can you confirm or not?
The next step is to oppose a lien on the property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands up from the board, so at this time, Ryan, would you please do a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair. I'll do a roll call vote. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Hell.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Thank you, passes four, one.
All right, thank you very much for that, Ryan. So, um, in an effort to give us more of a break, um, I think we will take a break between now and the time set at 10:30. Um, I do wanna mention, uh, today's meeting will be adjourned in the, um, memory of many people, unfortunately, this week, and I just wanted to, um, mention their names so we could have an opportunity to, uh, at least provide a few words. And this week, this week, um, we unfortunately lost them, uh, some of our really involved community members, Craig Peroni, uh, Rich Ames and Dan Toronto. And I'll just, you know, from my perspective, Dan was one of the folks that was really involved back in the general plan, um, let's just say he kept a really close eye on things. I don't, I don't know if he and I ever had many conversations, conversations, but I really appreciated his commitment to, um, to being at those meetings and, and trying to, uh, you know, make sure we knew what he was thinking and, and to broaden our horizon. Rich Ames, just somebody who's been great, played football with my brother years ago, um, and quite a force of nature and really sorry to see him go. And then unfortunately Craig Peroni, who is also a personal family friend, um, really good community member, very generous and, um, you know, all their presence will be certainly missed. And Supervisor Bone, did you wanna say some words?
I just, I mean, Craig was one of those, I probably could win the, uh, employer award through Del Rica Distributing and everything he did for the community, I think he was a founding, uh, board member for Redwood Capital Bank, um, he was on the beverage, beverage. He basically stood up for the smaller distributor on a national basis on the National Beverage, um, Commission, um, and his wife and daughter and son and, and grandkids. I mean, he, he was, he was going to every game right up until the end and, and, um, Craig, everybody, you talk about Craig, they always say the same thing, a true gentleman, they just drop it with a true gentleman, so. And that's all he said, and as we all know, Rich served on various boards. And that's always said and as we all know, Rich served on various boards and commissions and was always interested and was a financial advisor for quite a few people for the last fifty years in, in Humboldt County. So you, you hate to, you hate to lose people like that. And Dan was, Dan was Dan, he was, he was always good to listen to and talk to, so. Yeah, it's, it's never fun, but.
Thank you, Rex. Supervisor Madron?
Um, yeah, I appreciate you bringing all three of these individuals up. Absolutely going to miss them in our community. I think it's just kind of interesting that Dan Toronto is one of those persons, for those who don't know, he was heavily engaged in a group called United Stand back in the nineteen eighties when the county was starting to red tag a bunch of uncode houses with pit privies and all these things out in Southern Humboldt. And it was a pretty aggressive move by the county. And so Dan and a number of other individuals formed United Stand and pushed back on the county for the very reasons we were talking about on this previous item about having housing, you know, affordable housing in the hills, so to speak. So just kind of interesting that this is his day to, to leave us and for us to honor him. As we know, that United Stand pushback lasted some twenty-five years until the cannabis ordinances and other things came on the scene. So in any rate, just interesting juxtaposition of his passing with this conversation today. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. All right, don't see any other comments. So what I think we're going to do is we have to come back at ten thirty to announce the closed session for the time certain. So I suggest we take a break, come back then on this, this link and then we'll adjourn to all the closed sessions at one time, starting at ten thirty. So unless I see an objection. All right, we'll be back here at ten thirty to announce the time set and the closed session.
So I'd like to go to County Council Billingsley to inform us on our closed session items.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. The first is a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six. To meet in closed session, review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators, Kelly Barnes, Alicia Hayes and Jack Hughes for the organizations listed in the agenda. The last two items are conferences with legal counsel in litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point ninety-one. The first is the case of State of California versus Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, case number C V one eight zero one four three. The second is Hum CPR versus County of Humboldt, case number C V one nine zero eight seven five.
All right, thank you, Jefferson. I'm looking to see if there's any public comment on these items. There is one, three zero five three and seven four five four. Welcome, Thomas.
Hello, Thomas Mulder, can you hear me?
Yep.
I don't, like as far as the labor negotiations, I don't honestly follow too well, but I just want to remind you, I mean, I know COVID's probably done a number with their budget, but living wage. So if the goal and intention is to attract, retain and event, eventually have people become homeowners within the county and pillars in the community and staying all the way through retirement, you got to think living wage. What's living wage in Humboldt County? Well, at least forty thousand dollars is going to be like a bare minimum living wage if you want someone to be able to own a home in Humboldt County. I think you got to be looking at the sixty to seventy thousand dollar a year salary range. I think just food for thought, I look at that as an employer, what, if these people are going to stay around, what's going to be, how are they going to be able to live here and stay in this community? And I think those are things that have to be considered in budget development and those kind of processes. As far as the other two closed sessions, I'm not really following them, but the Hum CPR thing, I'm not positive if that has to do with land or the zoning updates or cannabis stuff. It's challenging to even find information on all that stuff. I know it's in the middle, but one day it'd be nice to understand that better and hopefully I'll figure that out one day. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. And our, our last speaker is Kent, welcome.
Virginia, yeah, thank you for my opportunity to speak on your closed session today. I am pleased to see that you are actually having, I don't know when it is, but sometimes you have attorneys negotiate and it looks like labor negotiates through Kelly Barnes, Alicia Hayes and Jack Hughes. And I think those are all employees there with you folks. It's always good to have local people working on these things. You know, just coming off of what Thomas said the other day, there are certain people out there that you have that my understanding are career county employees. And, and these aren't your highest paid people. I strongly recommend, since some of these people, you had an update not too long ago where you had to bring a whole bunch of wages up, but a sixteen-year-old working at In-N-Out Burger, first job they've had in their life, should not be making more than your entry level people with the county. So I, I highly recommend you research that. You put a floor on there at least equal to, if not more, than that sixteen-year-old at their first job at In-N-Out Burger would make. And I think that's, that's a good bar to set as far as that goes. Regarding your elected and appointed department heads, with that ten percent raise that all of you folks gave yourselves in that particular group, I think maybe you could go ahead and freeze yours for a couple of years and bring those lower people up against some of the higher paid people I mentioned last time. Got that six thousand five hundred dollars and one per person more because of reclassifying people. So I, I think maybe the top heavy thing needs to change, especially allegedly in some of your departments, the one where you have like over half your employees are with there. So regarding the Humboldt County Department of Health, I don't know if that's still the one where our little children weren't being taken care of. Hopefully we will come into compliance and do that. And, and Thomas, I think Hum CPR, that probably is one of those land use things most likely. And as anybody knows who deals with the legal profession here, it's just about impossible to get a judgment against the county and these things. So these all go up to appeal and as soon as they hit the appeal process, I highly recommend that understanding the competency of the council involved in that Hum CPR lawsuit, that you folks do your best to settle. We're tired of two hundred and fifty thousand dollar checks going to the office and attorney, plus you paying all yours, all this money. So thank you for my opportunity to speak. Please settle that one ASAP rather than spending the taxpayers' money to the tune of probably five hundred thousand dollars. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Kent. So with that, I would like to ask County Council, how long he expects before we would come back out to, to report back out?
Chair, my best guess would be forty-five to ninety minutes. Sorry to be so broad.
So, want to just report out at noon or something? I was going to say eleven, no, that's eleven. Okay, we're just giving a general one, we'll say, what was your highest guess?
Ninety?
Ninety. All right, well, how about we shoot for just before twelve? I don't know if that's going to work, but we don't guarantee it, we're going to do our best, but it could take longer for those of you who want to be here when we come back. So, is that close enough? I think it's going to have to be, so. With that, that's adjourned to closed session. County Council Billingsley, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, Chair. On items K one and L one, there's no reportable action. On item L two, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the firm of Remmy, Moose and Manley for the appeal of the matter of Hum CPR versus County of Humboldt.
All right, thank you. And where we adjourn, just want to remind everyone, we are adjourning today in the memory of three individuals, Craig Peroni, Rich Ames and Dan Toronto. So with that, we are adjourned.